Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop at Waterbury Arts Magnet School. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer. Thank you. Commissioner George Clooney, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Stango, could you please lead us in the pledge?
My pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge our student representatives, advisors to the Board of Education. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and tell us what school you're in.
Hello, everyone. My name is Eileen Garcia, and I am a senior from Waterbury Career Academy.
And my name is Jacob Adorno, the youngest of my mother's four children. And I will be a freshman attending Southern Connecticut State University, a former alumni of Waterbury Career Academy.
Thank you. Gee, you get to call yourself an alumni already. Oh, my goodness. Okay, well, welcome, and thank you for participating. Just so that everybody knows, we have a new policy with the Board of Education, that we have student advisors from all of our high schools. And we've set it up so that each month, a different high school would come to the two meetings. And tonight, of course, it's two-for-one, because we have the workshop and the regular meeting in one evening. We started off with Willby Students, and this month is Waterbury Career Academy. So we're very excited about listening to your student voice. So thank you very much. I don't know if Chris Wilson is here from Cave. I don't see him yet. So we'll continue. Public speaking?
I don't have anybody to sign up.
Okay, no, nobody signed up for public speaking. Okay. Then we'll go right along to Melissa Baldwin. Number one committee on Finance requests approval of agreements with the following for out-of-district placements for students. Melissa Baldwin, I guess Elaine is here. Good evening.
Good evening. Elaine Skoronsky for the Special Ed Department.
Okay.
We have contracts down for approval for out-of-district placements for Special Ed students. The Schedule As have been submitted to the board. I believe that was the request.
Yes, and I think we were waiting to see the schedule of rates, and has that been provided?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Elaine? Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, that was my request, and I appreciate it. And I did verify every single item A through I does have the Schedule A with the rates, which is what we asked for, to not be signing a blank check. We now have, in advance of approval later tonight, for all these items with the rates. So thank you for piecing that together. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Elaine.
You're welcome.
Next is, request permission to apply for the CSDE Carl D. Perkins Career and Technology Education Secondary Work-Based Learning Enhancement Grant. I guess this is Mr. Reed and Mr. Schwartz?
Hi, good evening. Tonight, we would like to request permission to apply for the Carl Perkins Technical Education Secondary Work-Based Learning Enhancement Grant. You have information in your packets regarding this application. This would be for Willby High School, to be able to use their DECA program to run a school store. This store has been defunct for a few years, and we have willing and able teachers to be able to put this together. They want to work with the students, student-led, student-run, all through the Perkins grant. And so we are requesting permission. Still working on a few items. John can update you on some of those things that have been in flux. We do have a date for submission next week, so we are requesting permission from the board to do that.
Any questions? Commissioner Van Stone, then Commissioner Awad? Karen, did you hear your hand?
No. When I reviewed this, I saw the deadline is tomorrow.
Yep.
And you're telling us you need till next week?
July 22nd.
Pardon me?
July 22nd.
Then I misread, because I thought I saw, unless it's the next one, when I go back to my notes, that we have four here tonight that are very close, and one actually in the past. So question is still the same. Are we ready to proceed and meet the deadline?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I just had, I was interested. Now, will the students be receiving credit for this? Participation, or is that just part of the enrichment program?
It's a student club, essentially.
Good, okay. All right, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. All right, it sounds exciting. Thank you. Next is another Carl Perkins Career Tech Ed Student Organization Statewide Improvement Grant.
Yes, Commissioner, I do want to make one mention, I apologize, around the second item, is there is language in there, if you read closely, that this grant does cover the first year, but the district would also be committing to sustainability of that program over a course of time, which we feel comfortable to be able to do. But we want to make sure the board is aware that this grant is to get this off the ground and running, and then the district committing to sustain that student-led club.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so we're on number three?
Yes.
This is, this is a proposal to reinvigorate the FCC LA program at Willby also, and in conjunction with the CATS Den program, which is a food service program. We're purchasing a number of things that will bring their food service up to code, to sanitary code, and getting computers for student research into careers and colleges. They're also taking a couple of trips to Central College, Central Community, Central Connecticut, and Southern to, on a fact-finding mission with the kids.
Great.
One of the things that does need to change in the original application is the deadline to spend the grant money is September 29th, 2019. Therefore, the conference is listed. Unfortunately, students will not be able to attend with this monies, but it doesn't mean they won't be able to attend with other possible funding from the school.
Thank you. Any questions about that? I was just wondering, in terms of the strategic planning, are we considering, you know, food service as a career path or a strand at Willby? Is this going to be connected in any way to that?
Yes, it will be. A number of the kids that take part in the CATS Den program and FCC LA are also in the foods strand, if you will, which is Foods and Nutrition, the first year, and then it goes into Culinary 1 and 2 after that. So that will be a pathway that's sustained.
Perfect. That's what I was hoping. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. The next is, request permission to apply for the CSDE 2019-21 Family Resource Center Grant for Reed School. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, I'm going to have also our coordinator at Wilson School, Cheryl Phillips, to join me.
At Reed or Wilson?
Wilson.
Oh, Wilson's the next one. Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, they're both four and five on mine.
No, no, that's all right. Come on, you can stay up here.
Stay up here, because she's familiar with both.
Yep.
So this is a request to continue to apply for the Family Resource Center Grant Program at Wilson and Reed School. As you know, we used to have three programs in the city. Unfortunately, the grant has been cut in recent years. We used to have one at Chase. That was cut down, but we decided to stick with our Wilson and Reed programs. You could see that the activities that they do, not only for families, but also before-school care, after-school care. They work a lot with our birth-to-five-year-old programs. And I'll have Cheryl kind of chime in on what her day looks like, and what the program does for families at Wilson School.
Welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Cheryl Phillips. I'm from Wilson, and the coordinator at Wilson School. On a day-to-day basis, we provide services for the families that are at Wilson, and also for families in the Waterbury community. We do provide a playgroup once a week for families, where if they need any assistance with language, we provide, was at a stone for them. We assist them with seeking jobs, and we reach out to the community for assistance with housing, I'm sorry, medical, anything that they need to, transportation, to just assist with their day-to-day living. And we also do provide before and after-school programs as well.
Great. Any questions? We're glad that the state decided to continue funding them. Yes, Commissioner Van Stone?
So this is when I noticed that the grant deadline was yesterday, and actually the grant period was two weeks ago. So are we at risk for any cost, or are we good with the process?
Well, interesting enough, it says that the grant applications are due on July 15th, but the Board of Education must approve by July 31st. Louise Brown has made sure that we would be in compliance with the grant, if submitted after today.
Just get back to us. A good program. I want to go forward. Just let us know we're at risk for any of these dollars. Thank you.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I was, just some quick questions. There was stated in the grant that there are positions that are available, full-time site administrator, part-time parent educator, et cetera. When do we plan on setting up those positions?
We do have a parent educator on-site.
Okay.
She's off for the summer, but it's a 10-month position.
Okay.
For both schools. We are, we do have.
Who's the site administrator?
That's Pat Moran.
It's Pat Moran?
Yes.
Okay. It's, stop it. Um, okay, I won't, I'll wait for the update, but it's my understanding that there have been some changes there. Teacher and paraprofessionals, have those been decided?
That process has not been decided as yet. Once we, in August, we'll reach out to the HR department.
Right.
Yes, and just, actually, in September, we'll see. We'll send out a letter with the HR department, and then do a process in the school to see which teacher would like to run the program.
Okay. Okay, so again, go ahead.
And we'd like to secure the funding before we hire for that. So we're, obviously, we'll wait for the grant to come in.
Yeah, makes sense, but I just, you know, reading the material, I just noticed these positions, and these positions will be, the grant will be paying for these positions.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so.
And the site coordinator, just so you know, it was Pat Moran, but more recently, we have identified supervisor at Central Office.
Okay.
And I'll be working with that supervisor for right now, in terms of the transition.
All right. So when you're ready to announce who the supervisor is, then I have some questions, but I'm satisfied right now with what your answers. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? No? Okay, thank you. Next is number six, May 2019 Monthly Expenditure Report. Okay, any questions? Okay. Doreen is here. Does anybody have any questions of Doreen? I just have a quick question. When do we actually close out that fiscal year? I know we're waiting for the budget and so forth. Is it closed?
No, our fiscal year '19 probably will not close until sometime in August.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, seeing no questions. Next, number seven, request approval of a transfer in the 2018-19 fiscal year budget.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a continuation of a transfer that we had approved at the Board of Ed meeting on May 30th, where we moved $1,080,000 into the building improvement line to be used for Special Capital Improvement and Revenue Fund, as this was funding that we had received from the hurricane relief, where we paid ourselves back. But the funding came in this fiscal year, where we had to pay ourselves back for the prior fiscal year. So this is just the remainder $539,000 that we would like to transfer down into the building improvement line, and we're going to take it from the accounts in payroll, be the substitute teacher line, the custodian, the school maintenance, and move that down into the building improvement line, where we will then put it into the special revenue fund for the capital improvement, as this is just a one-time residual type of thing, that we will not have anything like this again. It's just this one time that we want to set aside for capital improvements or technology. As you know, it was part of a budget reduction, where we had moved that. So just want to remind you, this is just finishing up that process.
Any questions? Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President. For the first line item, 511212 account, we're looking to move $475,000, which is a good move, if it was available. However, with the item prior to this, that account 511212 substitute teachers, it's only showing a projection of $250,000, which is almost half of what we're trying to move.
Right.
How are we moving forward, twice as much money is projected to be used?
Because normally, when it comes to May and June, that line item is usually when it's hit heavily. So we put a projection in based on prior years where we were in May and June of those months. So this current year, it did not hit as heavily as we anticipated. So I was able to move the full $475,000 out of that line. I think the biggest reason is, is there is a big shortage of substitute teachers. So it's hard for the substitute office to fill a lot of the positions for the call-ins. So that had, you know, did surplus more than what we had anticipated it from the beginning.
So our previous status you gave us, which is the previous item.
Right.
Is $712,000 in the current balance. But we're saying the projection is different from what's being reported to what we're trying to move forward.
I'd have to look at what you're saying, I'm sorry.
It's right there. We're saying that the projection, scrolling between the two, is we currently have a balance of the report we're seeing of $712,000, a projected expenditure of $2.7 million, with a surplus, if you would.
Right, so.
Of $250,000, which is twice as much as we're trying to move forward.
Right, so when I prepared.
I'm having trouble with the math.
I can explain this. When I prepared the May expenditure report, this was done weeks ago, and the final payrolls had not hit. The final payrolls have now hit, which is why I then did the transfer, to take it out of that full line item.
So the report we're seeing on item six.
Like I said, we anticipated a much higher expense in May and part of June, which did not occur.
So what we're seeing, as the report to the board on item six, is OBE, overcome by events, to say we actually have more.
Right.
In surplus.
In the surplus, that's correct.
So that begs a question, then. Did we pay more, and I would have to scroll, did we pay more than in absenteeism? If we didn't have subs available, we still paid teachers to be absent. So is there really a delta?
I mean, I know that the, I know that the sub-office has extremely hard time getting the subs for the amount of call-ins. You know, I mean, this has always been the projected trend for May and June.
I know.
We track it, and that is the amount we had anticipated to spend, however, with the shortage of subs available.
All right. And I get it. End of the year, we have to pay our bills. We have to do what we have to do.
Well, the June report will reflect it.
I'm just questioning if we truly have a real delta to spend somewhere else, because we may have a positive variance for substitutes, but do we have a negative variance in absentee pay that we don't really have $475,000 to spend?
Well, I mean, if a teacher is absent, they're getting paid.
I don't want to play with numbers. I don't want to say we have $475,000 to move. If you really look at the top-to-bottom budget, and we spent more in absenteeism, you know, we can make numbers, say whatever we want, but I don't, I'm not seeing this telling me that we truly have a delta to cover this expense. I may be the only one here, but if we're spending it somewhere else, the top-to-bottom budget does not have a delta.
Well, you have a delta on the line item.
In the line, in that line item.
Well, that's fine, but the bottom-line budget does not have a delta. So we're playing with numbers, in my position, to say we can cover $539,000 for building improvements. So the rest of the board can think what they want, but I'm saying we really do not have $475,000 to move between accounts. And with the information given to me, I will hold that position.
I think when I explained this at the Board meeting and the Finance Committee meeting prior, that was May 30th, where the board approved the other transfer. Again, this is funding, what we're moving into the special revenue fund to be used at a later date for technology and for capital improvement projects, which we had made a cutoff of the current fiscal year '20 budget, is from that funding that we had received and paid ourselves back for the hurricane relief. The money did not come in until this fiscal year, but it had to be reported in the prior fiscal year, which is where all the expenses were. So this is just a one-time, and we are now moving the money. That's all.
Doreen, I'm airing you with that.
And again, I could use this to offset any other line. I could use this $475,000 to offset another line that's going in the deficit.
I'm not convinced we have a true offset. We're paying for it somewhere else. I do not believe we truly have almost a half a million dollars to move to cover this other line account. And everyone else can think what they want, but there's absolutely no way I will vote in favor of this transaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Awad, would you like to clarify?
Actually, what I just want to point out is that, year after year, the line item transfers that we do are then subject to the audit that was sent back to this board about December, right? Is that when we get the prior year audit?
Yeah.
So if, in fact, there's not a prob, there is a problem, it would be brought to your attention probably in October, when they start the audit.
They'll be here in September.
They'll be here in September.
They've already done pre-work in July.
Right, so I guess, but, and I hear you, Commissioner, but my point is, the report you're looking at is in May. We're now through June. She's articulated to us that it's completely reconciled, and that there is, in fact, the dollars available. So next month, when we get the June reconciliation, perhaps it will clear up your concern, and we'll be able to put it to rest.
Right, this will definitely.
So it'll catch up with itself next month, because you're only looking at the May report, when she's done the numbers, to know that now she wants to move it. It's the end of June, and she's reconciled it, and she knows going forward what she has. So we are looking at two, at a report that's late, that's behind, that'll catch up next month, and hopefully clear up the concern that you have. I appreciate what you're saying, but I think that we have to trust, quite frankly, that we pay her a large sum of money to do this job, and she's done it very well. And I have the confidence that if she's bringing to us, as the chairman of the Finance Committee, a transfer, that the money is there and available.
Commissioner Van Stone, if you have a question?
Final comment. I could have either one.
Final comment? Fine.
I have purposely said we will postpone all monthly discussions when presented to us until the end of the year. It's now the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? As far as I'm concerned, this should have washed out many months ago. So again, I will state my protest to the fact that we think we have $500,000 available.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Doreen.
Okay, thank you.
Number eight, request approval of an agreement with various agencies for some grantee services under the School Readiness and Child Daycare Grant for Grant Years 2019-2021. Karen, good evening, Karen Rainbow.
Good evening. I'm Karen Rainbow, School Readiness Liaison. I'm here to request approval for the sub-grantee agreement for the school readiness contracts, along with the agencies selected to participate in the school readiness program for the '19-21 school years.
How many, how many agencies are involved?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, that's what I thought, okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Committee on Curriculum, Mr. Schwartz? Very busy with curriculum. I love it.
Yes, yes. Good evening again. So before you, we've gone to Committee on Curriculum prior to this last week, and we put forth in front of that committee multiple curriculums that have been written over the course of the year, with a lot of support from the content supervisors and teachers of the certain content areas. You see in front of you, great process in place, that really exciting curriculum is coming to Waterbury Public Schools for the 2000, for fall 2019. As you see, we are reinventing social studies in grades 6 to 8, and early childhood for preschool 3 and 4, mathematics grades 9 to 12, which includes Algebra I to Precalculus, reading English Language Arts curriculum, which is really putting all that good work that we've done in the past, putting it together under one curriculum document, reading and English Language Arts grades 9 to 12, reinventing English 9, 10, 11, and 12. We're looking to upgrade our chemistry curriculum and adding that high school health credit, which we'll be learning about in the new policy for grad requirements.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Van Stone?
Madam President, I just have a question. The Curriculum Committee, when we met last week on items 9A through G, our vote was to move forward to the entire board, not to a workshop. So I'm just asking why they actually appear here, which is fine. If we wanted to spend the time to go through A through G, we will, because we're very confident in what we're moving forward. But the vote of the Curriculum Committee was to move to the full board. So if I could just have that response.
Duly noted. I think the clerk made a mistake, so we'll move forward. If anybody doesn't have any questions or clarifications, Vice President Harvey?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just some quick, first of all, I was on the phone, and the, I already spoke to Commissioner Van Stone, but just for the record, that I was on the phone at this meeting, and it's not noted on the attendance sheet. So for the record, I was.
Do that?
All right. And if we could make that notation, that would be great. All right, now, we had a good meeting, Commissioner Van Stone, but just some quick questions, we, or comments. We had the community, two members from the NAACP, we had teachers, I believe most of them, and correct me if I'm wrong, Darren, were from Kennedy?
Yeah.
On the committee?
We had three teachers from Kennedy and one teacher from Career Academy.
One teacher from Career. One teacher from Career, okay, so, is this committee comprised of all of the teachers or the teachers? I mean, why is it that, it seemed like the majority of the teachers that were on this committee were from Kennedy?
Those were the teachers that could make that meeting that night.
Those, okay, do we have, is the committee?
It's made up of approximately 15 teachers that could commit to the process the entire way, so we usually open it up, which I did last year.
Do we have, my concern is representation. Do we have the proper representation from?
All three comprehensive middle schools were represented.
Good, okay, okay. Next is, we're doing a springboard. Is that just for the math, or is that for?
That is for mathematics and English Language Arts.
Okay. So, when, did we bid for this, or how did that process? How did we decide? I heard, I could hear just barely what was going on in the description. Could you explain what happened?
Sure. So, Springboard is a company that is born of College Board, which is also the company that creates the SAT. So, because College Board is a, is the only company that does create the SAT, they've also created material that aligns directly, not only to the Connecticut State Standards, Common Core standards, but they also align to the SAT. And so, how questions are asked, how assessments are given, and also how the instruction is designed, is to raise the bar and to raise the rigor up into those standards, and so that students have the better opportunity for doing better on the SAT. And, and so, with that information, that was considered to be a sole source.
Okay, so, we, normally, if we're looking for curriculum, do we, do we bid?
Yes.
Because I heard RFP mentioned, so that's, so did we bid?
We did not need to bid for that because it was sole source.
Okay.
There's no other company that creates the SAT.
Okay, I just want to make that clear, because you had the community there, and they have some recommendations for curriculum. So, they want to know what the process is to introduce their curriculum. And so, what I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, when we bid, there's something that we need, there's a need, so we do an RFP.
Yes.
Okay, and then we send it out to bid.
Yes.
So, that's what they would have to watch, you know, watch out for in terms of curriculum, if they wanted to offer their curriculum, correct?
No.
Well, that's why I'm asking, then.
In terms of the?
Okay.
Darren?
I don't, I don't care who responds, I was just wondering.
In terms of the process for selecting curriculum over a certain amount of money, yes, we have to go out to bid. We follow the city's ordinances regarding the bid process. And so, whenever, and most curriculums are, do hit that amount, and so, we do, on occasion, have to do that, but, you know, for example, chemistry is from that Kreg Consortium, as you were there, Commissioner Harvey, and that Kreg Consortium is just a minimal amount of money. And so, it's not a bid thing, we're just part of a group that helps write the curriculum and assessments of over 50 towns. And so, in that case, you know, there isn't a process, there isn't a bid process, we're writing that with 50 other towns and cities, and we secure that curriculum up, and that means, and so, there's not just one way of securing a curriculum. Even for the English Language Arts K to five, the Board has been great in supporting K to five initiatives, but under the superintendent's guidance, and actually, when we were talking about K to five curriculum, we had a lot of programs, and we didn't have anything tying it together for a curricular document. And so, you know, smartfully, thankfully, Dr. Ruffin requested it, because it's going to be a great help for our teachers and administrators. In that case, we already have existing programs and supplemental supports, but we didn't have that document. So, that's about just people doing the hard work of looking at all the programs, looking at the standards, making sure we're aligning what teachers are doing to the standards on a daily basis. And so, that's where that came out of. So, there's multiple different pathways, but when it comes to a large purchase, yes, we follow that RFP process.
Okay, thank you. That was clear. Now, one other question is, Joe Gorman presented the health part of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And from what I could understand, what was going on, he, I don't know if there was a decision made based on what he presented, as to what courses would be offered. Has that decision been made, or are we going to do that later on?
Yes, that decision's been made, and I believe it's going to be in the motion of the course, but the course is an extension of a full year worth of health in high school, whereas previously, students were receiving about a half a year's health.
All right. My question was, I don't know if, I can't see if Joe's here or not, but is there a means of introducing current, not saying that the data's old, but current things that are happening, opioid use, that sort of thing? Is there a segment for that?
Yeah, so, part of that curriculum, that health curriculum, does, does, does not only talk about opioids, but substance abuse prevention in general. And so, we were, we were doing an eight-week rotation for students that were, they were getting pulled out to do some of that work.
Right.
And so, now, what's nice is that we have a full year to go deeper into some of that material, specifically substance abuse prevention.
Okay, good. All right, and lastly, this was not necessarily discussed on Tuesday in regards to curriculum, but African-American Studies and Hispanic Studies, what, will we follow the RFP process that way in terms of curriculum, when we search for curriculum?
So, we discussed that briefly at the Curriculum Committee meeting, and we did talk about African-American, Latin, and Puerto Rican Studies.
Right.
And right now, we are looking to work with CERC. CERC is writing that curriculum for the state, and they are writing that curriculum for the entire state to be able to use that curriculum, and from our understanding, that is going to be a free curriculum for all, for all districts. At this point, we haven't been told otherwise, and so, right now, we're looking towards CERC. Right now, we have a, we have a program within the city, but we'd like to upgrade that program to meet the requirements of the new law that has been passed. And, you know, we'd love to help out CERC, I think we talked about that in our last meeting, to even expedite the process, that we'd rather not wait, the faster we can get that course, the better. And so, we look forward to working with CERC to get that into the district.
All right. And last but not least, Darren, I don't know if you, I'm not going to put you on the spot on this, so I'll refer to Commissioner Vance Stone. Not referred to in the meeting minutes, Commissioner, but the community at the meeting did ask if there would be some process set up for the community to have input on curriculum. And so, I don't know where that was left. I know the comment was made, I think it was Jenny Ray, President of the NAACP branch. Are we looking into that, or are we just going to just let that go? Because I know they will be coming back at us, asking that same question.
Commissioner Vance Stone?
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, through you. Couple things for clarification. Not this meeting, but previous meeting of curriculum and this meeting, I made it very clear that the community is very welcome, and that is something we did actually back a couple of years ago, when we went to two meetings a month as opposed to four, and we wanted to give greater access at committee meetings. One other thing I made very clear, very clear, and I did again the other night, is that although they are in the room, and they were given the opportunity for time on the floor, they are not a voting member. It is our responsibility to move curriculum from the experts to the full Board. They will not, and I'll say it again, they will not have a vote in what is in our curriculum. That is our job. Can they bring their thoughts? Absolutely. Are they included? They already have been included. The people that were in the room that night actually received personal invitations from me to be there on a public event. I did not have to do that, but I did. All right? So, I think this Board, and I'll say it as this Board, even though I head curriculum, went way beyond what we need to offer the community. They may not like that, but that's how the Charter is written. They can be in the room, they can offer their thoughts, but they are not a voting member.
Okay.
And if they want to call me and ask me that question, they can. I will bring President Brown into the conversation, I will bring Corporate Counsel into the conversation. They have been given an extensive invitation to be part of the process. And I will go out on a limb to say, this particular committee has probably given them an extension, and I hate to say them, given people an extension into our workings greater than any Board of Ed in the state of Connecticut. So, I will stand by how we have invited the community to participate. So, I think that answered the question, and I'm firm about this, because I made it very clear that they, that the community is not a voting member.
Thank you.
Their thoughts, their ideas are greatly appreciated, but we are following the letter of the law and some. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I say something, please?
Vice President Harvey?
Wrap it up. The question was not, I don't know if they approached you, but was not if they could vote. The question was if they could have input, number one. Number two, there have been other committees that have invited the community in. So, the Curriculum Committee is not the first committee on this Board particularly that has invited the community in, but I applaud it. So, my question was whether or not, that question didn't seem to be answered, and I don't know if they said to you that they wanted to vote, they haven't said it to me, they just asked for input. So, just to make that clear. So, I think we should continue to invite them. They did happen to mention they had some curriculum that they wanted to present to us. You can arrange that, because you're the Curriculum Committee, but I do not recall them asking for a vote, but they did ask if they could have input. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I had a question about the, I just wanted to make sure that in the health curriculum, that we really are incorporating the important issues related to the LGBTQ community. I've become very aware recently about the need for a really hard look at how we are working with students in, you know, in the LGBTQ, QT community. So, I want to make sure we're sensitive to that, and that it is on the radar screen as far as curriculum, as far as resources, as far as role models, as far as even history, the history of that community. So, I just want to make sure that we're, we're on the same page with that, Darren. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, human resources staffing status?
Good evening. Just a quick update on the staffing, and one of the most critical staffing pieces is our HR Director, Lee Palmer, being on board. As we speak, he's actually over at the Civil Service Board, where there's some job descriptions that are going through and being approved. And since Lee has come on board, and we've had Jessica on board full-time as a talent supervisor with the end of the school year, we've really been putting together our information and updating the information with respect to vacancies, with the rollover of the enrollments that just happened last week, we're aligning that. We've had extensive meetings with Doreen to really connect the dots between the budget and the vacancies, and now, the enrollment. So, Dr. Ruffin's been clear with the Assistant Superintendents in our various offices to work with that enrollment, connect, as you just heard about, the curriculum with the curriculum needs, and so, really doing a close look at, particularly at the high school and middle school levels, and aligning the staffing with the courses and the scheduling and the needs of, of the students. So, we feel like we are in good shape with respect to that plan coming together. We've been laser-focused on the academy piece with respect to that staffing and interview process, and now, we can pivot back and look at some additional hiring based on the actual needs that the schools have with respect to the enrollment and the curriculum. It's in the ballpark of 50 teacher vacancies. We've hired about 30 over the last few months, following our job fair and some of the other efforts that have been made. We had a group go down to Puerto Rico doing some recruitment. Dr. Ruffin was along for that trip, along with Dr. Rodriguez, Adella, and others, trying to expand our recruitment efforts with respect to minority hiring. I was actually on the phone with UConn today, following up on some collaborations with them, with student teachers, and sort of creating or strengthening that pipeline that exists. So, I think as we're putting all these different pieces together, we'll be able to come back to perhaps the Personnel Committee to discuss this in sort of more depth and share some statistical information on the hiring and the needs. But the work is feverish at the moment. We feel confident based upon the applicants we have and interviews that have been done to date, and as we confirm the position availability, we can follow up with those offers and have the full complement of staffing with certified instructors in front of every classroom of kids for the start of the school year, which is our number-one goal.
Thank you. Is there a handout?
No, I think, I think it's probably best for us.
We'll do that for the Personnel Committee, okay.
Yeah, confirming some of that information, and have, have Lee here, and maybe through the Personnel Committee would be the best place, but we could certainly come back here. I think with the academy piece moving along, and there's some, parents are coming in this week, and that will really be a big domino to fall, and how we fill those positions behind them and so forth, it'll all come into shape.
Sounds good. Any questions? Thank you. Vice President Harvey?
Yeah, just a quick, not question, but just a comment. When, when that information comes, I understand it's going to come to the Personnel Committee. There is also an Advisory Committee, CHRO Advisory Committee, so I would hope that you give the same thing, the demographics, who's hired, who, you know, based on demographics, how many, how many we recruited, et cetera, how many, you know, that sort of thing. So, I hope we will come with that. Do you have any idea when you'll be able to provide that information? Are we looking at September?
Yeah, sooner than that.
Okay, good.
We have that information, we keep it on a rolling basis.
Right.
And we've really built off of some of the work that Congresswoman Hayes did.
Yes.
And continued that, and Jessica's getting up to speed in those forums, and Renee and the folks in that office are sharing that information. We're looking to strengthen the alignment between HR and talent, so we're not at sort of cross paths, but working together and putting the right alignment of the folks in both of those offices to work collaboratively, and to give Dr. Ruffin the kind of reports in detail to that exact point and others, certification, enrollment.
Good.
Variety of needs she's asked for. We want to make sure we're having all that information together, but absolutely are tracking those pieces. Some is, as you well know, sometimes that's difficult to do based upon the reporting rules and so forth, but we have measures in place that Johanna and others have established and we've built off of, to do our best to track that, and very, very, very cognizant of that as a, as a front lobe issue. I could tell you of the, of the 30 or so that we've hired in the last couple of months, it's north of 25% from the minority perspective of hiring. A good percentage of that is Hispanic, based upon a real focus on the language issues and bilingual, and also a number of special ed folks were hired in that last batch, but that's something we are laser-focused on.
Okay.
And can report those statistics.
All right, so I'll wait for that information. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, Dr. Baker? Good evening, Michelle.
Good evening. I just wanted to provide an update for disciplinary climate absenteeism for this past school year. The data that I'm providing this evening is preliminary data as of July 11. The data that I'm providing this evening is preliminary data as of July 11th. The overall aggregate data of in-school and out-of-school suspension continues to show a consistent decline in both areas. In the past two years, there's been an overall 23.6% decline of in- and out-of-school suspension. In 2018-19, there was a 10.2% decrease in in-school and out-of-school suspension district-wide. In-school suspension decreased by 15.4% this school year. Out-of-school suspension decreased by 7.8% this school year. And overall, the out-of-school suspension is down by 28.6% in the past two school years. In the area of out-of-school suspension, all the school levels continue to show consistent decreases. The elementary schools incurred a 22% decrease, the middle schools incurred a 5.8% decrease, and the high schools had a 6.7% decrease this school year. Continued work in the areas of professional learning of restorative practices, social emotional learning, and trauma-informed school practices are planned for the upcoming school year. Data-informed decision-making is an area of continued growth as creation of multiple reporting systems that have been embedded into the principals' dashboards for constant progress monitoring. Lastly, in the area of chronic absenteeism, the overall district chronic absenteeism rate has decreased from 17.7% in the 2017-18 school year to 15.8% in the 2019-20 school year. Upon initiation of monthly professional learning series with the school administrators, our chronic absenteeism has dropped almost 7% since February of this school year 2019. This school year preliminarily, we have 16 schools that have met their ESSA targets for chronic absenteeism as compared to five schools last school year. The schools that met their ESSA targets preliminarily for this year were Carrington, Chase, Duggan, Generali, Kingsbury, Maloney, North End, Reed, Regan, Rotella, Wallace, Washington, Waterbury Arts Magnet Middle, Waterbury Career, Westside Middle School, and Welby High School. Thank you.
The indicators are going in the right direction, Michelle. Great work.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions for Michelle? Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Doc. Nice job. Not really a question, just generally the comment, anytime this comes in front of us. While I do appreciate numbers seeming to trend in the direction that we would all hope, too often, and I know it's anecdotal, but I hear from both students as well as staff members that, sure, numbers are going down in terms of suspensions and referrals, but behavior's not improving. So while this is great, can you give me at least any anecdotal stuff on the other side where maybe it is improving somewhere?
Absolutely. In the past, we haven't tracked any of the tiered-one interventions that we're doing to support students before. What I'm reporting out to you is exclusionary and punitive deterrents that we use of in-school and out-of-school. There's a multitude of tiered interventions that we provide for students prior to even getting to that point, and the majority of our students are responding to those tiered interventions. This school year with the work of Will Zuda and the IT Department, we're going to be tracking all of those interventions because, as you said, we're continuously reporting out on this end result when in reality, the goal of containing emotionality and having children be able to respond to situations where they're actually being contextually correct and relevant, we're not keeping track of all the good interventions that we're doing. So this school year, we will be keeping track of all those interventions. I will tell you preliminarily, over 85% of our students in this district have never incurred an in-school and out-of-school, and that's not due to the fact that those numbers are decreasing or are shying away from it, but they're responding to tiered interventions that we're putting into place for students so they don't get to the point where they incur those exclusionary punishments.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Keep working.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Vice President Harvey. Michelle, sorry.
No, no, you're not getting off that.
Not a problem.
No, thank you. I'm just teasing. All right. So this is a report on chronic absenteeism and out-of-school and school suspensions.
It's an update.
Update. All right. What is the update in regards to arrests, student arrests, and what do we?
The last meeting that I spoke a month previous to this, there was a decline in our arrests from last year in the last three months of the school year.
And I remember that.
That trend has continued. We've incurred monthly meetings, not only with the teams that we're working with, but we also have weekly meetings with Waterbury Youth Services, who does our Juvenile Review Board services in addition to the kids program conducted by the Waterbury Police Department. We have weekly meetings in regards to not just looking at numbers, but talking about what kind of students we can deter from recidivism.
In regards to reporting, have we had any conversations with the police on how they report arrests? Are we looking into that?
We're looking at making sure that both of those data systems are exactly the same. So we're lining up our systems for next year so that those weekly meetings, we're looking at making sure that those reporting systems are synonymous with the same exact kids, and then talking about what services certain students need so that they don't reoffend.
Sounds good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez, then Commissioner Adorno.
While we're on the question of arrest, can you tell us, basically, what's the age group? Is it more middle high school, more middle school, more grammar school, more high school?
Towards the end of this school year, no, it's high school. And again, it's recidivism that we're looking at. It's a number of students who are having a repeated incident and occurrences of whether it's out-of-school suspension or an arrest, but it's the same students in terms of a referring population. So one of the reports, we worked with the IT Department to not only start to disaggregate that specific group of students based on their demographics, but also looking at what is the presenting discipline that students are coming to us with so that we can start to match up the services that we're giving to students and be able to deal with that at the school level and then be able to refer out to out-of-district agencies also to support us with counseling and outside.
Are we providing the same type of services to all schools as far as middle school, high school, grammar school? Are they all given the same type of services?
The support staff and the personnel that we have in all of the schools, at the middle school, we have the same titles and the same support, number of support staff that we do at the comprehensive middles. In addition, it's the same for the high schools. So there's a multitude of support staff professionals, but everyone has the same that the middle school has. They have that at the high school. So if you have a behavior technician in a middle school, they have access to behavior technicians at the high school.
But not our grammar schools?
No, they do have access to support staff in the grammar schools, absolutely, and it's allocated based on need. So, but they, absolutely, every school does have a group of professionals that work as, we used to call them our CAT teams. We also used to call them SSAT teams to intervene early with students, but every school has a team, a group of professionals that do work towards supporting students when they notice referrals are coming in and they're mounting up, and we start to take a deeper dive into what's causing those behaviors.
Thank you. You're welcome. Commissioner Adorno?
Thank you, Madam President. Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
I do want to really congratulate the schools that have met their targets because I know that's not an easy thing to do, but I do want to really mention to the board as far as the absenteeism to, from the Public Health Department aspect, to expect when school does start, you know, Connecticut statutes on certain physicals and immunization requirements, and those kids that have not met those will be excluded from school. So, you know, for the parents, those that are mandatory are pre-K, kindergarten, sixth grade, and 10th grade, so if they are entering the next grade, expect that on the first or second day of school, they may be sending your child home until the nurse's office receives that. So expect the absenteeism to go up because those are non-excused. So we're encouraging the families, and they do have the whole year in advance notice.
Absolutely. And proactively, those same students were all contacted and families were contacted long prior to the end of this school year.
Correct.
So that preparatorily, they could do those things over the summer.
Correct.
But thank you for making that known. We can use all the help we can get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you very much, Michelle. Next is the number 12. Mr. Clark, request approval of the educational specifications for the proposed Washington school elevator.
So the next two, 12 and 13, are essentially the same. This is the, essentially, the broad stroke specs of what DAS wants to be filed as far as pushing a project forward. We've gotten the approval last night at the Board of Alderman. You'd previously given approval for us to make the application, so this, we're taking the next step, literally 24 hours later, of filing the specs. So we're going to, with your approval on the specs, which again, this is just the broad strokes, essentially, that you're going to build an elevator at a school. We put that in, we've already budgeted, and the Board of Alders has approved, actually, an increase to a previous budget for this amount, for the amount for both elevators that we've had costed out with our folks. So this will allow us to put that into place. Once we get rolling on the back end, we will then, with the approval of DAS, they'll shake out through the specs, we'll do the formal bidding process and get a vendor in place to do the install, which is sort of the next thing on the agenda, which is the other contract. It shows you the back end of this thing. Number 14 is the actual contract for the four elevator projects that you've approved previously and has gone all the way up and all the way back down, like an elevator should, I guess. And so this is the actual contract for the four that we're getting going, ideally at the end of the summer and into the fall. The contractor will actually work on all four at once, and so these other two are starting the process with the filing at DAS.
We're moving along. Any questions? We're very happy about that.
Extremely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to just?
Yeah, so I think that's 12, 13, and 14, really. 14 is the actual contract for the projects themselves, the four that you've previously approved. That's been through back and forth corp counsel, I want to say that.
Are they doing that this summer?
Well, as soon as the contract's approved, so it has to get signed off.
Then you could, okay, then you can start.
They won't let us do any work until it's all signed, so if it gets approved here, unfortunately, we'll then have to go through the other side and get it approved to the Board of Alderman. But they're ready to go, so as soon as it's signed, they'll mobilize. There's provisions in the agreement to work around school hours and so forth, so we were hoping to get some work done this summer and to get some of the banging out of the way and do some of the exterior work, but that may drag into the fall.
Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I think we've built schools in the time it's taken us to get these four elevators running, but my question is to the last point of your comment there. I know in a perfect world, we were having this begun and essentially almost wrapped up before we had any students in the building. What now that, you know, we're still waiting for contracts to be signed, what is our now realistic completion date for these?
I have to follow up once it's signed with the contractor to confirm that. We'd hope it to be done this school year, but I'll confirm that for sure. We were hoping that it would be done this school year with getting some of the work jump-started this summer, so depending on weather and so forth, it may drag, but I'll get that confirmed. The specific location of these four is essentially on an exterior part, so, you know, we'll be able to sort of cordon off the area in really a three out of the four pretty easily. So I think we could, should be able to move along. They do a lot of exterior work, and then there's a lot of work kind of inside once they get the shaft organized that sort of just goes on without folks knowing, and then the machinery sort of shows up. So we'll get a lock-in date from them, and I could share that with the board on the back end. We'll certainly be working closely with the principals as well to make sure we're not impeding any of the educational issues, and if that's a problem, we'll adjust again.
Terrific. And I'd like to thank Attorney Whitby's office for turning this contract around quickly.
Yeah, they did a great job with Attorney Whitby and Attorney Dawn DeSantis. It was very, very helpful.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, all right. Number 15, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments.
15 and 16, nothing far out of the ordinary.
Okay. Commissioner Vanstone?
I've got to ask. For outside organizations and waiver requests, we have one request for a pool where we are waiving the fees, which at least in my time on the board has been outside of standard practice. Anytime I had ever asked about, you know, could we give this group or that group the pool in waiver, there was always a resounding no. Whatever the policy is going to be, I think it just needs to be a policy. So if we're going to do it for one, are we now doing it for all? Just wondering, you know, is there any color you could add to the situation?
Sure. The specific organization there is PAL, so they supply their lifeguards and support. Many of them are our kids, and the historic, as I understand it, relationship with them has been because it's primarily our students that are participating in the program, and they're one of our main providers of after-school support and activity, that they're essentially considered a de facto Board of Ed program for purposes of the permit fees. And that's been the case for the gyms and whatnot, so it was extended to the pool in this case. So we want to revisit that or direct me to have a conversation with PAL, I can do that.
I guess I'm just a, I believe in precedent, so if this is now the thing, if the Bunker Hill Neighborhood Association or whomever now says, "Well, the kids in my program are Waterbury kids, why don't I get the pool for free?" I just, I don't like saying yes, no, yes, no, and it's a problem we have with this whole process, you know, going back to the beginning of time. So I get the rationale, I get, but at the same time, there are some people we say, "No, you are paying for it." You know, Sagahara High School pays for it every year. A lot of those kids are Waterbury kids, you know, it's, you know, and some of them are doing us a favor by not attending our schools and taking the pressure off some of our full high school buildings. So, you know, I would like to give every one of our spaces to every one of our programs and make schools an open place for neighborhoods, but it's, whenever we do a yes, no, yes, no, maybe, I think we open ourselves up to problems. So I think that we as a group, and this is my committee, so I'll just call a meeting on it to figure out exactly what we're going to do, has to get away from this practice of, you know, someone thought it was a good idea, so we'll do it for this group, but then someone else didn't think it was a good idea for this, so we'll do it there.
I think it's a great idea to do a review at the committee level and to dig into it. There's other examples out there with policies and so forth. I would just note that, at least on the PAL front, they waive the fees associated with a lot of our kids, so I wouldn't want to get into a fee waiver game with that.
But at the end of the day, we don't get any money anyway. It really doesn't matter from our perspective.
The other factors as well.
I'm more from a, just a fairness perspective. I don't care if it's fees or not.
No, I understand the presidential point. Well taken.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Commissioner White?
It also, to your point, brings the question of the appropriate use when we do allow the outside agencies because I believe, I don't know, but I believe that we give permits to outside agencies who then lend their permits to other outside agencies. So we find that we're going to have an entity that we've got an insurance policy for that isn't the entity using the gym. So I think somehow we need to come up with a methodology of policing that as well, so I look forward to your committee meeting, and I don't think I'm a member, but I plan to be there.
Look forward to having you.
Yeah, that's news to me, so, yeah, okay, good. Well, I'm glad, we'll look forward to our meeting. Okay, and I think that's it. We're on 17 now. Attorney Shaw is with us this evening. Good evening, Tara.
All the way in the back.
Request approval of an agreement between the Waterbury Board of Education and United Public Service Employees Union, UPSU, Local 42424-Unit 69, Administrative Support Staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. I've provided you with a summary of this first contract between the Board of Education and Unit 69. This is a labor contract, all grant-funded, Board of Education employees. The duration of the contract is for four years, from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2022. The wage increases are included in here, including the projected dollar impact based on the current census of that unit. It's a total wage package of 7% over four years with a wage freeze in the initial year of the contract, which is consistent with other City of Waterbury labor contracts that have been resolved over the past couple of years.
Thank you.
In addition, there are some modest changes to the insurance program offered to this unit. They remain in the traditional PPO plan. There are additional changes to the contract language, including some language to reflect the Supreme Court decision in the Janus case that prohibits compulsory agency fees for members, or, excuse me, employees that don't want to be members of the union. We added affirmative language to this contract to clarify that overtime pay would be paid, overtime pay being one and a half times the regular rate would be triggered after an employee has worked 40 hours, which is consistent with state wage and hour laws. employee has worked 40 hours, which is consistent with state wage and hour laws as well as the Fosa. We've added additional language guaranteeing a 14-day advance notice of a pending layoff, with such notice to include the reasons for the layoff, the impacted employees, who will be named, and the number of positions being eliminated if a layoff were necessary. Article 7, Section 5, we've revised the wording within the funeral leave provision to allow for non-consecutive days off. At Article 7, Section 13, we've added contract language addressing workers' compensation benefits. Specifically, the language is consistent with other city contracts and board contracts as well regarding the maximum length of time that an employee can remain unable to return to full duty. Article, Article 10, Section 4, we've added new language that's just a severability provision, meaning if one section is deemed unenforceable, the remainder of the contract remains enforceable. Article 13, Section 7, we've added a mandatory direct deposit for all employees by January 1, 2020. Article 14, Section 3C extends health and wellness incentives to members of this unit. There, those are incentive benefits that are available to members in other city units. And Article 19, Section 2C is modified language that, we corrected language that appeared to make retirement fund contributions mandatory for members of this unit. There was a certain percentage. The city can't enforce that, the board can't enforce that, so if people want to participate, we would encourage them to do that, but we can't make it mandatory. Are there any questions about this contract?
How many, how many people does this impact? How many employees?
There's about 60 members of this unit.
60?
Yes.
In both, both contracts combined?
There's about 50, I believe 50, in the teaching, the classroom assistance, which is the second unit.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any questions about the contracts? Okay, thank you.
We have Unit 68 as well. There's just a couple of variations.
Okay, go ahead.
I won't repeat. Again, it's a four-year agreement. These are the classroom assistants. Again, it's a seven-year wage package over four years, a 7% wage package over four years. We've revised language governing members' work obligations on teacher professional development days. That was unclear, and there's been some issues regarding that in the past. There has been elimination of the board-level Step 3 grievance process, allowing the members to proceed to SBMA, the State Board of Mediation and Arbitration, after the superintendent's level as well. And multiple eliminations in the contract that referenced AAA and ADR, which were alternative dispute organizations, to hear those grievances. Now they'll all go directly to the state. And the one other issue, I believe it was a grievance before you at one point in time, has been resolved through contract language that the board will provide necessary supplies for changing diapers for children that require them in our programs.
That's important. Any questions about those contracts? Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Number 19, superintendent's update to the board.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. I have several updates to share with you. One is to speak specifically about some progress that we've made on Wendell Cross. We believe that we are on track to be able to move the project over, and I anticipate that sometime in August, we will have an opportunity to review some of the plans, so we could look at the final plans for the building and make any further recommendations that we might choose to, to share, and that would be with your committee, Commissioner Vanstone. Additionally, we have moved forward with several of the additional programs that we began working on in this last school year, the Transition Academy, which will be opening in the fall of 2019, 2020, and that will be to service our special needs students, particularly in assisting them with life skills and internships that will allow them to be able to live independently. We will proceed with our Welcome Center, and Mr. Clark, as well as the rest of us, will have an opportunity to, to see what the Welcome Center will look like. It replaces, in concept, what we currently have as the Intake Center and brings about the resources for our parents who are registering their students and coming to our system to begin preparing their students, like obtaining information that will help them to make good choices about our school system. Will be very user-friendly, providing the technology for registration on, on board and on site, as well as bring together several of the resources that our families often need in not only registering a child, but also in preparing for the, the shot records, the transportation, the family and community engagement, which will all be housed in one center. So I look forward to sharing more with you and having you visit it once we've actually established what that's going to be looking, looking like. Additionally, the Academic Academy, I'm very pleased to announce that we had over 265 applicants. We were able, not, not just we, but several of the staff, including some of our parent liaisons, Dr. Emerson, Dr. Baker, Ms. Buckley, as well as others, assisted in the interview process. We were very impressed with the number of students and the quality of the student applicants, and also the commitment that their parents have voiced about their interest in, in attending the academy. We are full, and anticipated that we were going to have good response based on all of the community feedback that we'd had throughout the year, but to, to say that on our very first year, the number of students that have been accepted based on that interview would bring us eight classes instead of the anticipated five that we might have had. It's, it's a good problem to have, but at the same time, I think it causes us to look forward to seeing how we're going to be able to grow and develop in the years to come. With that, there were some interviews held to select some of the teaching staff that will be working with the academy. The staff has made those recommendations, and, and we will be moving forward with a meeting with the teachers on Friday, as well as like to invite our commissioners to attend on the 19th, which is, which is Friday, an opportunity to see the students actually signing their letter of acceptance. I think that we do a really good job of promoting our students when they're signing in for athletic scholarships. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for students to sign in and acceptance into an Academic Academy. This will start at 10 o'clock in the morning, and for about every hour, there'll be a different grade group coming through to sign. And so if you can't attend all of it, maybe you want to see or talk with the children. I think you'll have a great insight as to what you have allowed to happen for them, because there is a deep level of appreciation that an academy exists to be able to challenge them as well as provide the academic rigor that they're looking forward to.
Where is that going to be signed? Where's the signing at?
Wallace.
At Wallace?
Yes. As a matter of fact, as of this afternoon, we believe the signing is actually going to occur in, on the auditorium at Crosby because of space, and it would allow us to be able to have more people, and our parents are very comfortable as they come in and do some actual signing in. The Academic Academy itself will be at Wallace. The, in the few weeks to come, you will see me put together a, a package to show you how some of the changes that we are implementing in the district, how that will impact our budget. In many instances, it's going to be a matter of shifting from one area to another, but I will be sharing that with you over the upcoming weeks so that you could see how the, the funding will be in support of some of the programs that we're establishing in the district. Likewise, I know Mr. Clark referred to some of this in terms of the staffing update. I, I think that you will be able to see how some of the staffing will occur across the system and, and how that's going to be beneficial to our students as well, its implications that that might have for our staff, particularly those schools that are in turnaround mode. Likewise, in June, I'm sorry, in July, we will begin a strategic planning process. We will begin that with the Center for School Change. I've spoken with Commissioner Brown. There's a date on the calendar, so we could begin our strategic planning, which is going to be centered around the port of our graduate, as well as establishing core beliefs and some groundwork for us to be able to set some clear goals for the future moving forward. I have one final comment and announcement. I know that I've made some administrative changes, and I want to be very clear on what my process is whenever there's going to be leadership changes at the schools. It is not about a person, it's really about what's best for students as well as looking at data. So I'm not talking about a particular school, I'm talking about how decisions are made and how I render my decisions at every time. I, I look at data, I look at it over time. I'm very careful to make certain that I'm not jumping to assumptions. I want to look at how students have been achieving, what their achievement process has been over time, as well as whether the school is meeting the criteria as established by the Connecticut Accountability System. While testing is not the only important issue for students, it certainly is not the only one, but it is a contributing factor, as it is also what makes our district attractive for others that are sending their students here, staying here, and wanting to be a part of what Waterbury has to offer. So in the decision-making process, I'm very careful to look at data, and I look at data over time. In addition to that, I also look at where the district needs to continue to enhance its academic as well as operational successes. Sometimes people are very good at an operation, sometimes people are very good at management, sometimes people are outstanding at leadership, sometimes people are really outstanding as instructional leadership, and I'm very careful in making certain that the decisions are made so that both the school as well as the individual can be successful. I also have some expectations for all of our schools. You will see that many of our schools, all of the elementary schools, as a matter of fact, this year are off of the school improvement list as, in, in terms of being labeled focus schools. That takes concerted effort on the part of the leadership to make certain that schools do not go back into focus. Likewise, we have had some success in turning around some schools and seeing some success on the secondary level, but very minimal. And when we look at some of the course offerings in some of the schools and specialized schools that we have, it is my expectations that schools such as Rotella, Maloney, Waterbury Careers, and Waterbury Arts Academy are some of the top performing schools in Connecticut. In addition, I would want them to not only be the top schools in Connecticut, I believe that there is an expectation that they're going to be the top schools in Waterbury. In the absence of that, it's my responsibility to make the changes and decisions that will allow us to be able to move forward, because I believe our students deserve that, and I certainly believe our parents do as well. And so when I make decisions about school leadership or I make decisions about where programs are going to be held, I take into account all of those things in addition of that student safety. And so in closing, those are some of the steps that I take in making decisions about where we're going to be leading and how we're going to be leading effectively in the, in the district, and how decisions are going to be made in terms of not only leadership, but also in operation and organization of our schools. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Looking at the rest of the agenda, we have, starting with 20, superintendent's notification to the board, items 20 through, I guess it's 20, through 20I. Any questions on those? Just, okay. Could I have?
Madam President.
Vice President Harvey.
Thank you. In looking at, let's see, the resignations, the, our new, our Director of Personnel is not here, but I would hope that we perhaps had offered an exit interview, I think I counted around 18 exit interviews to those folks that have, are resigning, so just want to make that statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, and then we will, a couple of minutes, we will convene our, our regular meeting.
Okay.
Take a break for a minute. Oh, the meeting's at 7:15, so.